Five, six hours on Saturday. Call it out. If that gentleman will still allow us to take the road.
Well, will we contact that gentleman or are you gonna contact that gentleman?
I'll try to get hold of him.
Well, it needs to, it needs to go.
Yeah, it's a nice word.
Yes, right on the main street.
They both do. That's what I said earlier, people don't, it's not right that they have to look after them as fast.
Well, we appreciate both of you coming in and letting us know what's going on and you do both have full backing of the commissioners. So. It's in the minutes here now and you.
Now, one other, one other thing I wanted to bring up, and I don't know how to handle this because this, it kind of falls between the state and county vote, but on Highway thirty-nine going toward Radnor Oakley area, the turnoff that goes to Prince William Road is unbelievably unsafe. The farmers have, have put corn all the way up to the corner and you cannot see oncoming traffic.
No, I think we have a rule that after it hassles and it hits the ears, they're supposed to cut it down. So far.
If it's encroaching the state right away, then that's something the Comal Salis Sub District can take care of.
Right, right.
Something needs to be addressed on, because it's, you're on a state highway, but yet you're going onto the county roads, so I don't know where that falls, but.
You cannot see.
You cannot see it all.
He plants corn every year there, but it's also more than just cutting it down because the actual ground comes up there into the field. So he could cut that down to, you know, the height that you normally trim back a corner, and you still couldn't see. I, I'm not sure on that corner if you planted beans and had blow, or if you could could see well enough to get through there.
I don't know, but somebody's gonna get killed there.
They are, there's no doubt about it. It's, it's, it's every bit as dangerous as where the McCormick's planted two rows of corn in front of their stop sign down here outside, two kids go up here. And it's, uh, the, the difference is that road hardly anybody drove down. This road pulling off on Prince William Road is heavily, heavily traveled. Probably one of our more.
Well, I know there are several county employees at the courthouse that travel that road because they've all contacted me about, you know, hey, can you do something about that? And I don't really know what to do about it, so.
State highway.
It's state highway probably. Where the corners is not along the county road, it's along the state highway.
I agree, I, first I've heard of it, I can reach out to Mark Kelly, he's the contact for the sub-district of Comal Salis.
Well, I appreciate it if you give it a follow-up. It's every year, every year this does.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Nick what?
Nick said he's calling from something being an actor's.
Oh, so he'll come. Well, we're ready for Butler Thurman Cypher.
Duke. Area plan four H update.
Oh, area plan four H update.
Gentlemen, good evening.
Yep. This is Congressman.
And I'm here as the president of APC. And I guess, um, we, our word set, will you guys appoint a, the four H extension agent and myself onto this board? Well, um, legislation passed this spring that as a July first, if the four H extension agent does not live in our county that, that's on board of, they can only be a technical advisor to our board, they can't actually be a voting member. And at that point, they need the commissioners to appoint a, another member that can be in the vote, voting member has to be a property owner, um, in Carroll County and also has to have an agricultural interest. However, I may be, I don't know if you want Ted to look into this to, um, give you better, you got until October first that there's somebody on the board. Thanks, please.
Uh, how long do you have, Nick?
You.
I can just go at the end, I'm sorry, it's Monday morning, it's kind of a little hectic, so.
I know. We, we probably have not more than three or four minutes.
I'll just wait. I'll step out and I'll just wait, when they come out, I'll come in. Does that work? Okay.
The, the, more or less words, we need you guys to appoint another individual for the area plan board. The extension.
Lives in the county, has agricultural interest in the county.
Yep.
I suppose has to be twenty-one years old or eighteen or something, but anyway.
So the property owner.
Property owner.
So we need to advertise if you might want to do it.
They might have. So it's the same process as you would for your other members.
Do you guys have any idea who you'd like to have? I thought of one, Mr. Bill would be interested, and I don't think you'd be a good candidate for it. Lauren, you can't do it because you're looking at. Mike Bill.
I'm just sure we'll look at really, really good yard.
But we can at least get the process started with advertising.
Right. They got October first, so.
Okay. Now Ted, is this advertising a review for this?
No, you should publicize it, so, uh, the law is, uh, section two oh, two oh eight of their plan statute.
John?
The county extension.
Yeah, there's a guy right there.
I'm not resident in there.
Anyway, the county extension board shall select a resident of the county who is a property owner with agricultural interest to serve on the commission. It says.
This is why I'm sorry. I didn't hear the first part then.
Okay, statute's thirty-six, eighty-seven, four, two, eight. And it's under number, uh, you know, I, I, I wanna get back, you know, like I got time to read the whole thing, but it looks like.
My understanding was they can make a recommendation, but it's kind of like the, the regular process to where after they do, you guys are the ones that find it, because they're gonna be representing the missions.
Section four B says the county, if the county agricultural extension educator is not a resident of the county, the county extension board shall select a resident of the county who is a property owner with agricultural interest who serve on the commission under the subdivision for a period of, you see, one year. In addition to the, to, to the county resident selected by the county extension board, the county agricultural extension educator who is not a resident shall serve the commission as a non-voting advisor. So it's chosen by the extension.
I think the extension, they told me that they, they were told that. So I'll look into. That's what the.
We were just told.
Six, seven, four, two oh eight, uh.
That would, that would simplify things a lot if they had to do it that way, but that, they, they come to us.
Two oh eight, A, four, uh, B.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And you all are there because you go out where.
Good morning.
Thank you, Nick.
I apologize for my tardiness, it's Monday and so it's a little hectic, so. I am here today to talk to you about, uh, the prosecutor's office and location. I know we've brought this up in the past about moving things around and, um, I kind of took it upon myself to explore some of those options. It's difficult to manage an office and be in court all the time. It makes it ten times more difficult when half my office is on the first floor, half my office on the second floor. It just makes it tough. Um, so I'd really like to get us all under one roof, and when I say us, I mean my whole office under one roof. And so I had a contractor come in, or actually, had a contractor come in and look at the museum because it just kind of opens space. Um, and then Steve Mullins and I, we kind of put together a plan of what we would like it to look like. The other half of this is that the city has been generous enough to give us the second floor of the city building for the Abby Libby investigation. They give us a whole room, we have it under lock and key, and that is just a gentleman's agreement that they've given us.
And he contacted me after the news break, and said we're good to go.
And that's beautiful, but that also could end at any minute.
Right.
And, you know, that, I don't think it's gonna happen, but I'm always thinking about two steps ahead, and so it would also be nice to have that investigation under my roof. One, to manage the, uh, evidence that's there, to have that under a secure lock and key, which is under lock and key there, but it sure would be nice to have it under, all under one roof. So, uh, I kind of looked at the museum and just that space, like to use it for some benefit. And so Steve and I, Steve Mullins and I kind of drew up some plans of what we would like kind of what we thought it might look like, and I had a contractor come in and take a look to see if it was possible. He has not given me numbers and I want to contact another contractor and kind of get some competing bids here. But this is an idea of what it.
You have, we have one.
Oh, oh, sure, sure, sure. Uh, let's see here, so. Sure, so this would be the south entrance. You follow me? So. We have. There you go. So we have two entrances, and so this would be the south closest to where the handicap parking is and where the office park, and then this would be the north, right? So. This is kind of, and this is something Steve and I put together, right? There's nothing set stone course, and we don't. Can make it smaller? Or so it fits on. And so, there you go, there you go, so. Obviously, the bathroom is part of the wish list, but it's not a necessity, right? Because we have the bathroom here on the first floor. That could easily just be storage. Um, and the bathroom does complicate things because of plumbing and all that kind of stuff and, and what's going on there. Now, it will need its own HBSC, I believe, and the contractors said it probably is gonna need its own as well. So we will need that, but the bathroom is not a necessity. Everything else, I think, is a necessity. We have a lobby, we have the four D office, which is child support, uh, part of the prosecutor's office, one for Marie and then one for the attorney there. We would have our, uh, room for the investigator and the secretaries, we'd have a conference room, which would be the Abby Libby investigation room. Um, we would have two interview rooms, which would assist us in when we resolve cases, a lot of the drug cases, we ask for a cleanup statement, right? Who else you been talking to, who else you been dealing with, those kind of things. Those things gotta be taped, right? And so it'd be nice to have two interview rooms, right now we're using the interview room of the city, again, they're gracious enough to let us use that, but they don't have to. And then, of course, um, myself, chief deputy, and so this will fit in the space down there. Now, cost is probably the big question, and I don't know. Right? We can't, the intention is not to build walls to the ceiling because we don't want to mess with the architectural integrity of the museum. It has historical value, we don't want to do that. So we have to put, you can imagine, a roof on these things, because at least my office and the chief deputies have to be somewhat confidential plus the two interview rooms. So we would have roofs, if you will, on those portions, and so I have no idea what the costs are gonna be, I'm still assess, assessing that, but this is a tentative plan.
Well, you're the first one to come up with a plan.
Well, I don't have cost with this, apparently, I really had hoped that I could get that done.
We put money back, we put money back for something like this. I'm good with everything you got, but the kitchen and the bathroom down there, that would cost way too much.
Sure.
To me, I think you need that for storage of evidence, or even put in a holding cell.
Sure.
You know, I'm talking about because sometimes you have to hold them until they don't take off running.
Yep. Like I said, this is kind of, you know, if you're going to.
Right, the wish list.
Burger King, have it your way, this would be my way, but again, you know, and I'm not opposed to doing some of it now and some of it next year, you know, spraying out over a period of years, because I get, it, it's expensive.
Well, you, you get, give me, I don't know about these two, but if you can give us the cost, you can get it done sooner than later.
Yeah.
In my bubble, I have it.
Right.
The whole thing, except for the bathroom.
No, that's, again, Steve, Steve and I sat down, we said, you know, let's just shoot from the noon, I suppose, and, you know, ask for everything we can, and so, um, that's kind of what we have, I mean, and again, I am big on the move. If this doesn't work out, I sure would like to have my office, again, under one roof. It's very hard for me to manage employees when half of us are on the first floor and someone's on the second floor. And I'm, um, in court on the third floor. It just makes it very difficult to do on top of everything else and required. And so that's the big thing, and the Abby and Libby investigation is a concern. Again, the city's been gracious enough, but we don't know when that's gonna end. Right? We don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow, and if the city needs that room, they're gonna use it.
I can see this would free up the four D office right across from Larry's office.
And my office, the two offices of two rooms that my office consists of. It would consi, well, it would also free up the APC office because I think the plan was to put Steve over there, and that makes it even more difficult for me, right? Now, if three spots where my office is at, it makes it tough.
I think it was a good plan, myself.
I'd like to say something, I know my voice goes in and everything, but, um, and I love the plan, I think it's great. But you have an election coming up in November that's already been advertised for that room.
Right.
So I'd like for, well, I suggest that you talk to the clerk and see what time limits that she needs also. Um, because you can't just move.
Right.
Her stuff.
Well, this probably won't happen till the first year anyway.
Well, I know, but, and next year's not an election year, but the next year it is, and so I think you need to think ahead and like where are you going to have your elections, so. That's all I've got to say.
We're, we're planning on using up the, the, uh.
Right, which, which rooms are on?
Lounge room as surveyor's office and all that.
And that's what it used to be.
So we have no large room yet left to have an election.
Like she used to be in the lounge and then.
Right.
Well, we can still use the, the smaller lounge.
Which works.
Which where, where Donnie sits now, the surveyor, and his own private office on the smaller.
I'm not worried about the lounge, I'm worried about the election.
Well, I think it would work there. Really?
I will concede with every plan, there's good and bad, right? And the bad thing is we do lose, we as a county, we lose that space for elections, and that is a nice space to have the election or the machines for people to come in and vote. I don't disagree. And so, you know, that is the one bad thing, we lose that. Now, there are other options, they're probably not as big a space as that, I mean, I know at one point they had them in the rotunda. I think what I was.
I'm not talking about election day, I'm talking about the early voting and, and everything that goes on, I mean, it's like thirty days after, before the election and a lot of different things.
That is exactly right.
Unless you wanna, you know, maybe give up that conference room for a couple of months.
That would be appropriate to have an election in the prosecutor's office. There is, yes, yeah. That is exactly right, that is the bad part about this plan is we lose that space, but just to, just for, to play devil's advocate, we use that space thirty, sixty days out of the year for election, let's say sixty, right? Thirty days for the primary, thirty days before the, the general. Are we really using that space for its full potential? And I would say no.
Actually, it's four months, so.
Four, okay, so four months.
But what I'm saying is we, they used to, when I was county clerk, we used to have it in the back room. And when Ambria had it there, it was in the back room, but it just keeps growing and growing, so.
It's because we lost the response to the room.
And rooms are, the rules have changed a lot, and so then we moved it down to the lounge. You know, Amber and, you know, corrections came in, so we moved it down to the museum. So. That's a concern as a former county clerk, that I think you can get the clerk involved and see what she could suggest or borrow from this, from, whatever.
I agree with that, I mean, that, that is, that is the one bad thing I forgot to mention, of course, and I'm kind of pissed.
Your office where it is now, over here. Where his office is right now, he's got two big rooms up here.
And most of them essentially be vacant now. I know I've talked to Penny Titus and she would like to move her records that are off of the APC office into one of those rooms just for convenience. But that would still free up the back room to hear the. You're gonna have essentially three rooms free if we do this, right? The four D office, and then my two rooms on this, my two, the two rooms I use as prosecutor's office on here on the second floor.
Both those rooms there, that might work.
And the APC, and the APC office, because you're gonna put Steve there, so really you're freeing up three spaces.
Right, so those two rooms might, might work, and you've got the people under voting and it's, and maybe it's supposed to be more confidential.
And even if it passes way through into the clerk's office.
So she could, maybe help me now, that might be good.
Just a.
Just ADA.
I'm gonna get a couple, actually, I wanna kind of.
Right.
All right, costing a pair, and I apologize, I really tried to.
Anything over five hundred dollars, you gotta pay.
Excuse me?
Anything over five, you have to pay.
If I could, I would. Because this is gonna make my life so much easier.
And I think it'd make it easier for everybody coming in out of your office, too.
I understand you. I'm not complaining, I am grateful that we have the space that we have, but it's difficult when you're conducting investigations when law enforcement undercover people have to walk through a public office to get to your office. It's just, it's tough. And it's tough, we have a tough time with confidentiality because we're right there with the, it's a public office, anybody can walk behind the desk, I mean, it's just the nature of the office. And so it's, it's tough. It's tough. So this would be a lot better for us.
Nick, you use, this is just for my own information, you spoke with Senator Fox today about Abby Libby, about the four little girls.
That too. That is ongoing, that is with the state police, and so they have that investigation stuff in their headquarters. Um, and so I'm not discounting that investigation, we just don't have to house the evidence for that because state police is taking that over, they're housing the evidence. And so that investigation is no less important, it's just, we don't have the evidence problem, that investigation, the state police has trouble. So we have the evidence problem at Abby Libby because it's still a Carroll County Sheriff's Department investigation. So, and there are boxes and boxes and boxes and boxes and boxes of evidence for that, as you guys can imagine.
Oh, I'm sure. So, you can probably fill that room up over there.
Absolutely.
Does it have a store here or?
At the city building right there. We're, this is kind of getting down the lead, we're moving in electronically because we think that's better use of space and everything, um, but yes, right now it's at the city building.
This is Mr. President.
Well, Steve is the, kind of the architect behind this, I kind of told him what I wanted, he set it up, and he has the program, so he's been a huge help, um, but let me give you some estimates and let's see where we're at. I don't know, if we're at ten thousand, I don't know, if we're at ninety thousand, I just don't know.
Well, we have, there's a hundred thousand back for for renovation, and actually, there was supposed to be, I think, at least two hundred thousand back because they did it a couple of years in a row. And then, I think it went back into the general fund, one of those hundred thousand.
No, it stays.
No, it stays in that fund, but you know, you have your budget, and if everybody says what we've got in each line for all these years, that budget, that fund will be depleted.
Right.
So we gotta decide on what's, what's in there, really.
Right, we need to decide what we're really gonna spend it on. Which I think this is a good investment.
Ask the council to earmark it, if I'm correct.
Well, I think regardless, if you don't agree with what I have planned out and you don't think that should be the prosecutor's office, we should use that space for something.
Community movement down there.
Community corrections, probation, whatever it would be, we, we probably, I think we should use that space for more than just.
Community corrections, they need like two or three bathrooms and, and, you know, that was a big, big issue. With you.
We can walk up, have to fly the stairs and use the bathroom.
Right.
I worry that we're commiserant, but the, uh, uh, it's inconvenient for the, you know, auditor to go get things, for Ted to go get things, I think, just, you know, and it could be terrible, you know, because you would.
Oh, it's horrible.
A lot of this.
When we have the press conference, it, it's just horrible.
Terrible.
It's horrible, but we wouldn't be using it for that purpose, right? We would just.
Right.
Bad acoustics are good for us, right? We don't want sound to travel when we're talking about stuff, and so that, that is, that is a plus for us. And so, but yeah, it is horrible, I, it's horrible.
Thank you, uh, Chuck, now, you said, do you want me to give you the numbers, the numbers on it?
Give us the numbers.
I'm working on that, I've had one person come look at it, but it's difficult to get people in here right now with the situation we're in, so I'm trying to look for other contractors to come in and give you some estimates, but I, I will get that done.
There's some contractors out there looking, there's one, I think they've got a chance.
If you guys, and again, if you guys suggest somebody, let me know, um, text or come in and sign the office, because I don't have a problem with them coming in and giving us an estimate. You know, I'd like to have four or five, to be honest with you, that way we have a good range of what we're looking at.
Our first choice is always the girl town.
I, I agree, I agree, I would like to stay local, I'm, I'm big on stay local, shop local, employ local, I, I'm, I'm very big on that, so, yeah. Good, all right, thanks guys, appreciate it, start on the target again.
That's all right. Now, I think we're ready for Butler Thurman Cypher, right? Good morning.
Morning. All right, we have a couple of things for you. One, uh, we originally had, uh, in February, early March, we provided appraisal for parcel one for the sort of easements, uh, for people, uh, I'm trying to find if you want to review that documentation, as we need approval for that. Second is we are providing a non-exclusive perpetual easement documentation for your approval as well. Um, this is just using the.
Can you present your name and also you're gonna have to speak a little louder.
My name is Alex Prince of the Land agents, Butler Thurman Cypher. Essentially, like I said, we have two things we wanted to do, the first thing was, um, back in Lake River, early March, during the Fisher meeting, we had provided fewer copies of the original appraisal that was done for the parcel one easement area. We were not able to verify at that meeting whether or not that, that had been approved. I think that's one additional time to look over that material. Um, with COVID-nineteen, we were not able to, again, determine whether or not that was done, so we need approval of that. And then the second thing that's in front of you is a non-exclusive perpetual easement for that parcel, uh, this is just a generic document that has been generated using, uh, documentation of the state by website. Um, just using that appraisal, now, if this was a document that we might have tried to use, it would have been a good reason for the property.
Okay, uh, Ted, tell us about this document, what are we, we're doing during this?
Need the utilities to be able to run it to jail, and this is based upon the appraisal. Was that in February, earlier this year, so this is a standard perpetual easement for utilities.
What does it mean, non-exclusive perpetual?
It's not exclusive just to the utilities that we're using, it's unique, any other utilities that got to.
Fiber optic, anything like that.
It's designed for future use so that we don't have to go back and acquire second one for fiber optic or, or.
So we need to endorse this, or?
Yep, uh, you're authorizing basically the acquisition to be, this to be offered to the property owner. And in exchange for their signature on the easements of this, this is to water the user. If for some reason the property owner didn't agree with this number, then you know, I don't know what the amounts are, I'm familiar with, you know, highway projects, but for easement like this, I mean, I think it could, could be negotiated, but, uh, if, if county, you know, landowner Dan agreed, then the next thing is it would have been made to come to mention.
Well, this is offering twenty-three thousand three hundred dollars.
Can we talk to the people?
Uh, we have not, we had to have approval first before we presented the offer to the property. We do have the property owners, attorney, these local here in town. Um, once everything's approved, we'll be able to offer today.
This, uh.
How'd you come up with this number?
Uh, that number was generated through the appraisal of one in Oregon, um, it's based on the plan to prove its value.
Can you just kind of hide this for a little bit, the side post section?
Well, it's two point two three eight acres for the area, because it's an entire stretch to deal with the size of the ousted road that exists.
Over here. My opinion, very surprised this was smooth.
Well, we know we have to build.
Well, we have to have, we have to have sewers, water, phone, everything back there. Down through here, so. So at this point, Ted, we need a motion. No way on, on approval of this offer? Is this an offer or is this an agreement?
To, to, to approve the, uh, the amount and the easement, the form of the easement.
Is this? Do they still have rights to use that land?
Yes, um, they will still be keeping the majority of the property to the property. Uh, the easement area just basically established after the commissioners get the building later on and operate. So you still will go through and maintain those utility easements after, so you won't have to acquire it again. Uh, but just basically grants that area for that use of.
Get advantages there of the state's prop?
Um, realistically, they were, once the property lands and redrawn, they would not be able to approach on that easement area.
Okay.
The props.
Basically, that group's aside then?
Yeah, so they were basically, whatever you want to put in there, they'll go there and they will be able to go up to that. They should be able to approach on it.
Okay.
Yes, realistically, they could plant anything here to potentially be much tougher.
Why, why do we?
That's why you.
Yeah, they've lost their prop space forever. Why is it better to just get an easement rather than owning that strip? I mean, they can't use it from now on. They can't plant on it.
I believe it was felt that the easement would have been more beneficial. My understanding, but just to be able to, to be.
You don't really wanna own lots of parcels everywhere, you know, where you're using. You just wanna easement for, you know, with the less that you, the less form of ownership that you have worked for, that you value. It's, 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 it's almost the same as the deed to the property though, that it is perpetual. And you don't want to be the fee owner of that property in the middle of somebody's field. I mean, things can change. Uh, if, if the, uh, people acquire easements, you know, well, I mean, the railroads, you know, those are prime example. Some of those are free, so it's important. So you don't, you don't want it to be anything other than easement. Probably reasons.
So they're still taxed? They're still paying tax?
I suppose they are taxed.
Yes, it's a tax. It would be simple, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't get the answer to that. They're paying tax on it from now on, but they don't have a use of it, right?
There would be credit, I'm sure, for the, the usage of the easement. Uh, there's a certain portion, right?
Yeah.
But I think it's. They own the fees, uh, but it's starting to, it's likely to get credits for very different things that are on your body. Well, that's.
Public.
Yeah, yeah.
And why, and why does it get everybody so worried?
Right. Correct, yeah, it's another good thing. You owe me a certain. And you get, don't you get credit? You, you go in there and have that taken off your, pardon. And you don't have the whole thing taken off, that's something to grow. You're only earning till rate or till the rate. And that's the same, just, they get, they get part of it, so they're not gonna be paying the rate as if it's their farm.
Now, does this consider the soft cost?
Pardon?
Is this considered as soft cost part of the jail?
Uh, gee, that's a good question.
This is already been approved by the council. If that's what you're asking, then it's already in the line item, I believe.
Yeah. It's not construction.
It's not. That's right.
I believe.
Well, gentlemen, I entertain a motion.
So, so, the other needs to be where, I kinda got, there's like two different things there, isn't there? One for this and one for the other?